You ready? Welcome, everyone, to the December 7th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. In attendance tonight, we have Buddy Hackett, Jeff Brand, myself, James Genison, Andy Knapp. Joining us remotely, we have Steve Diamond and Andrew Melnickus. We also have John Huckins, Code Enforcement Officer, Barbara Irvine, Land Use Administrative Assistant, and Connor McGyver, Town Administrator. First on the agenda is review of the minutes from November 30th. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing done. I'll do a vote. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Aye, second.
Motion by James Genison, second by Jeff Brand. Buddy Hackett?
Aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Andrew Melnickus?
Andy, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Genison, aye. Minutes approved as written. Next on the agenda, we have 270-23, 273-49-GR-21 sub Anthony Sarah, request by applicant Sarah Ragonese to construct an 11-lot conservation subdivision, et cetera, et cetera. Guyer, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, we are requesting a continuance tonight to the next available meeting. The town engineer hasn't been able to complete their review yet, so until they do, we would ask for a continuance.
All right, that would be to January 4th. Sounds great. Any questions, comments?
I make a motion to continue application 270-2 and 3, 273-49-GR-21 until January 4th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp. Andy M.?
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett?
Hackett, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Genison, aye. Thank you so much. Number three, 251-63-RC-21-SR, owner Steve and Pamela Lindsay, request by applicant Robert Russell, 2A tactical. Welcome.
For United Builders, we're just here to ask for a continuance as well.
Do we have a date in mind?
Next available.
January 4th?
Yeah. Okay, January 4th. We have a public hearing on some zoning, and we have a working session with the next regular meeting for doing business is January 4th.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion to continue application 251-63-RC-21 until 4 January 2022.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp. Andy M.?
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett?
Hackett, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Genison, aye. Continuance approved. Could you ask Mr. Frankowitz, I noticed he's still corresponding with Connor on all his letters. Could you just have him send them to the planning office?
Sure.
Yeah.
Will do.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, okay, thanks.
Number four, 245-15.1-GR-21-SR, owner Brian Hubble, request by applicant for site review to do tree trimming and move along 67 Cooper Road, which is a scenic road. Do we have someone here tonight for that?
Terry Cooper, representing EverSource Energy. I'm a work player contracted through EverSource. I have a couple of apps if you need permission.
We don't have on that computer, delete that.
About half trees.
Yeah. It would be easy to put it up on the mark. Oh, okay, I gotta dig. It's in here.
I have it. Yeah, it's the same thing as this one.
Yes, it is. I just did it on paper.
Right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I had a tree fall on me this week. It's been...
If you want to go ahead and explain?
Thank you. Again, my name is Terry Cooper. I work contracted through EverSource Energy. Currently, there is a place. The building is past the existing power poles and requires at least four poles that have already been put in place. My job is to assess trees or vegetation that's between the poles that would interfere with us putting up the power lines to get power to the house. I went out, I assessed the area. I'm only looking for things that are directly in between the poles. I marked the tree locations on the map as given, as well as any trimming that's between the poles. The normal trim situation is, I understand this is a scenic, and we can discuss that. Normal trim situation is eight feet to the right of the conductor, 10 feet below, and 15 feet above. That'll give clearance for the lines during any type of windstorms for vegetation or if the lines themselves move. We're looking to trim that particular corridor between pole top to pole top. The trees that are mentioned on the map in front of you are the ones that I had identified that are right within the line of sight from pole to pole. It looks to be about, I think it was 10 or 11 trees total, of wires.
Which, 24, 8 of them are dead.
As part of my assessment, I look for dead trees or any dead leads that are on live trees that might be an issue as well. We like to take those at the same time when we have the bucket in the air for all.
Before deciding accept the application.
John, application looks complete.
Yeah, it was. All right, I make a motion to accept application 245-15.1-GR-21-SR as complete.
Second. Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp. Andy M.?
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett?
Hackett, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Genison, aye. Motion to accept the application is complete. Board, if any comments, questions? I said the big map, please.
As I just said, it appears that the dirty trees you're taking down are dead already. So, clean up. And a large pine tree, which we all know. Those are a danger, a hazard around here in the wintertime, anyway.
They act like sails, they have...
Yeah, yeah. I just, I had, my neighbor and I... Excuse me.
I said, one question, just for clarity. You had mentioned trimming for heights and...
Yes.
Are all the trees that are marked on here coming down, or some of...
All the trees that are on here are coming down. The rest that are within the corridor from pole to pole, we'd like to trim. Leaving the tree up, we just want to create that corridor. Again, the specifications are normal EverSource specifications for a four-year trim cycle. And basically, we're trying to keep when the lines start moving in the wind or the trees start moving in, and that's the buffer that they've assessed is the safe buffer for a four-year period.
Okay.
So, we can assume that this double line down here, that is the line?
That, the double line is the road.
Oh, that's the road.
That's the road. And the round circles are the poles themselves.
I have a question. Do you also have to request this from Northwood as well? Is that this road spans two towns?
We're not over the Northwood line.
Right. I wasn't sure which way the power lines came in from.
They're feeding 202 section on the road, so that's coming from Barrington.
Yep.
I had to walk that a few times, wanted to make sure, because we're also feeding from the Northwood side, too.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not sure. It is coming from, there should be a takeoff pole right under the north symbol on the map. You'll see a plus sign on the pole, that's the takeoff pole. And that pole is being fed from 202 area.
This appears you are first crossing the road.
That's the way they place the poles, yes.
Okay. And so, can we assume that there's probably vegetation remaining between the trees that the ones you're taking out?
Yes, there is vegetation.
Yeah.
Remaining, it's just, some of it we can trim, some of it we can't. Knowing that it is a scenic, obviously, care, extreme care is taken.
All right. How viable would it be, excuse me, how viable would it be to bury the lines? I know that'd be more disturbance in the short term, but then you could leave the trees permanently thereafter and not have risk of lines being damaged or coming down.
That would be an expense probably brought up by the owner of the new house. I mean, that's, we don't normally bury lines on the roads. The poles have already been put in place. My assessment was simply to look at which vegetation needed to come out from the poles that were already put in place. So, if someone wanted...
EverSource made a decision, you're just the forest for taking care of it.
Yes. The EverSource riders came in, they looked at what poles were needed to bring power to the house. They put the stakes in, the pole company put the poles in, and my job as from the vegetation management end is to make sure from pole to pole it's clear for the lines before they put the lines up.
This is an extension of existing lines.
Yes, it is.
And from a practical point of view, if you went underground, you would stay on one side of the road. You would have to eliminate every tree all the way down through to dig the ditch line to put them all in.
Right.
And by jumping back and forth, you're keeping vegetation on both sides of the road, which still acts as a screening.
Correct.
So, it'd actually be more detrimental to the scenic road to go underground than it would be to go ahead.
And you dig up the...
I see your point. In the short term, yes.
And you dig up the root structure of every tree running along that end.
And who knows what about stone lines and ditch lines and all the other stuff that...
Once the tree root structure is damaged, then...
Tree's dead, yeah. Or you'll kill it off quickly thereafter.
Is this gonna be a recurring trimming after this?
Well, this is a scenic road. It'll go on if there's any trimming that needs to be done. It'll go on the normal scenic list when we do our normal trimming. That's presented, again, I think about every four years on the cycle. These are the trees we'd like to trim, these are the scenic roads they're on, and then that list would be to the town.
Any other questions from the board?
No. If you guys are good, I'll make a motion to approve.
Let's open public comment. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open a public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to make comment, just need to come up, state your name and address for us, and try and get in view of the camera if it's...
And if there's anybody online.
As well as anyone...
Anyone online or board members.
Okay.
Big turnout.
Anybody? All right, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve the trimming of trees for 245-15.1-GR-21-SR. What's that? Removal.
Aye, second.
Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Jeff Brand. Andy M.?
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett?
Hackett, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Genison, aye. Motion is granted. Thank you so much.
I thank the board, the chairman.
Well, I guess I do.
Should I read that into the record, John? I think you kind of jumped ahead. All right, let me read, I'm gonna read the notice of decision into the record. Dear applicant, this is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board, at its December 7th, 2021 meeting, has conditionally approved your application referenced above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within 12 calendar months of the day, December 7th, 2022, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. Conditions precedent. Add the following plan notes, none. Revise the following plan notes, none. Any outstanding fees shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper plant sets and supporting documents as required in Article 3 with a letter explaining how the applicant addresses the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports of all items submitted during the review of the town of Barrington's files. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meaning the conditions of approval. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible left by 17 in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. General and subsequent conditions. The applicant's engineer shall certify in writing all improvements have been constructed as approved prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. School impact fee will be assessed at the time of the building permits submitted by the building inspector and paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date of the plan was signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board, so long as it is applied for at least 30 days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated on site plans RSA 67439. Best of luck.
Yeah, I would just suggest, so that people don't think that we forgot to put something down here, that under conditions, 22, after the colons, just put NA, just so it notes...
There was none.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the first time I've done one, you know? I've never had the tree trimming come to forest before, so I didn't even know. Flipped to the last page.
We're good.
We used those trees to make that offer.
Pardon me?
We used those trees to make the paper you just read.
Excellent. Well, glad to see we can repurpose. Number five, 126-19 and 24...
Again, before you...
-GR-21-LL, Nicholas Metropolis, request by applicant for a lot line adjustment between lot 19 and 24, map 126, lots 19 and 24, by transferring parcel A from lot 24 to lot 19 on River Road in the general residential zoning district. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Nick Metropolis. I purchased a piece of land from the city with the agreements to split it. It was a tax lien that you guys sold at auction to split it with the other abutts that also wanted it, the Riley's, and plus, we have to divide that amongst us. Then that's what we're trying to do, just do a lot line adjustment per your orders.
Good. John, do you have everything for application to be considered complete?
Carol had done those first three, she wrote up with the stuff, but I did go over with them, they were complete.
Good.
She was having, I guess, internet issues trying to get in. She was gonna do virtual tonight.
Oh.
But I guess there's some internet issues she's having, which she's not able to...
Does anyone have questions about the application?
Yeah, not about the application. I have questions.
Let's, if we could have a motion to accept the application is complete?
Motion to accept application 126-19 and 24 GR-21-11 as complete.
Aye, second.
Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Jeff Brand. Andy M.?
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett?
Hackett, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Genison, aye. Application is accepted as complete.
I would just like to correct, I called it 21-11, and on the paperwork, it's 21-LL.
You give us a brief synopsis, but I think we understand what's going on. Jeff, you had a question?
Well, yeah, I just, a couple, you said you, just wanted to understand what you're doing. So, this, this lot 24, which is going to decrease, correct?
Yes.
I can explain, I think I can get the background. There was a lot line, there was that lot across the street, the bigger lot, portion of that lot was the lot the town owned.
Which lot number?
It was the lot, was it 24-yard lot?
126, map 126, lot 24.
Yes, 24 was my lot. 18 was a separate lot, which...
So, what happened is that lot was one lot, and it was supposed to have been divided in half when they bought it from the town. There was a mistake made to where that got merged to, the two lots got merged together, so then they had to go to the zoning board to get permission to make that lot smaller. Originally, they would have divided that lot in half, both the lots would have got larger, because half of it had gone to each lot, so it would have been three lots into two. But because of an error that was made, this is trying to correct that error.
But we're creating a new lot, 24 is only gonna be 23,000 square feet. Now, I know you got a variance, right?
I did, because we added it by accident.
Yeah, if it wasn't added, it would have been made it in...
The variance, so well, the next step, they said, well, add it to your property, and then do lot line adjustment. So, I did. Can't do a lot line adjustment because you have a lot. We had to go back to the zoning board, made that mistake. We should have never added it to my lot. I should have just went to a line lot adjustment, divided it prior to adding it to my lot.
Would have been a lot line adjustment to three lots into two, was what it should have...
So, lot 24 is gonna end up being 23,000 square feet, for which you've got a variance. I mean, what's the, what are you gonna do with a lot now that's...
Nothing, the town just wanted to get rid of it and not have it, also, we split it.
It'll be merged back in. Adding half to his property and a half to someone else's property.
Never wanted...
24 is gonna go to somebody else?
No, 18, I don't know what you have.
Oh, okay.
I see.
Or across that little dirt right away, it was a separate lot, no one wanted to be built, none of the abutters wanted it built. So, they offered it to the abutters, the Riley's and I said we'd purchase it, and as long as we could split it in half, and that's...
All right.
And that's, well, the town told us to split it in half, but now renders it unbuildable.
Okay, got it.
Any other questions?
So, that means the new lot that's formed will not be built on?
It would be part of the building lot that's part of the lot next to the lake. There is room to put a garage or something there in the future if he wanted to, but it wouldn't have a separate home on it, because you're only allowed one dwelling per lot.
But that will be re-merged in to be part of, to be all one lot.
It'd be one lot still.
So, it was an existing lot.
A separate lot.
Correct. And he's making it small and non-conformous.
Welcome, Carol.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Hello, welcome. Thank you. We're on the lot line adjustment case, number five.
Oh, okay.
Somehow along the way, I mean, the reason I want it is my well is on that lot. Across that dirt road, my well is on there, and I have it right away to that well, but I want to protect that right away and my well, purchasing the front part of that property.
But you also have a well the other side of it.
That's been, it's just a dug well. This is an artesian well across that dirt road. I don't know if that map shows it, but that was the whole reason I wanted to protect my well.
All right, if the board has no more questions?
Open some public comment.
Yep. I will hold the public comment. If anyone here that would like to ask questions, make a statement.
I don't see anybody virtually that's not a part of it.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. Any other questions from the board? I'll read the draft notice of decision. This is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board has conditionally approved the application referenced above. All of precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within 12 calendar months of the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. Conditions presence. Add the following plan notes. A variance was granted by the ZBA on a given date.
Yep, and the next one, I would suggest putting NA after it, because it's number two.
Revise the following plan notes, A, NA. Any outstanding fees shall be paid to the town. Number four, prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper plant sets and supporting documents as required in Article 3 with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during review for the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meaning the conditions of approval. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible 11 by 17 in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. General and subsequent conditions. The applicant's engineer shall certify in writing all improvements have been constructed as approved prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. School impact fee will be assessed at the time of the building permits submitted.
Doesn't apply to a lot line.
All right. I only, we'll delete the general and subsequent conditions.
And the date for the variance is right there.
And add the date of November 22nd, 2021 for the ZBA. There's no other questions, a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request for a lot line adjustment for map 126, lots 19 and 24, GR 21-LL.
Aye, second.
Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Jeff Brand. Andy M.?
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett?
Hackett, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Genison, aye. Motion granted. Good luck. Thank you. Next up, we have 239-1-TC-1, Candace Harvey, request by applicant to amend position over the filled-in ground pool area. Thank you. Map 239, lot 1. Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
Whenever you're ready, give us a...
Candace Harvey? My mom. I shut it off because I can't get, no, I shut the computer off because I can't get an error message.
Do we have, I was just digging through my, there it is. There it is. John, do we have everything application-wise?
Yeah. Basically, what they're doing is a residential addition. They're not changing the previous area of the lot or changing the business use there. Because they came for the site review, we really have to come before you, because they're expanding the use that is on a move site.
So, I have a question. So, when I look at the plans, I know what existed, I looked at the plans, there's an existing three-bedroom dwelling. This would be an addition over the pool, it's quote, uh, quote, addition. But then, when I look at the plan for the structure itself, I notice it doesn't appear to be an expansion of the existing house. This has a separate, there's no pass-through door to the existing house. This has two bedrooms, full kitchen, bath, dining area. This looks like a separate apartment dwelling.
It is connected.
It's physically on the side, but there is nothing...
I think what Jeff's saying, does it meet our ADU guidelines?
Yep.
Well, okay.
It is a complete in-law apartment, self-sufficient, 100%.
Right, so this didn't identify itself as an ADU that I saw.
My parents are...
Can't be an ADU, it's oversized.
Right. It doesn't meet the ADU, so...
We can build a duplex without site approval, a one or two family have allowed without site approval. They're expanding their site plan, so because they got more than 1.86 acres, they could[1730.06] they could do a straight-up duplex by rights under town. So it doesn't have to be an ADU or meet ADU requirements.
Okay, but and that's, but I'm, that's what I'm trying to identify here is exactly what this is. Because it's not identified on the application. Right. It's not technically an addition. It's a, it's a second dwelling.
But it's an addition because it's attached to the house.
I understand. But you're going to end up with a duplex essentially.
Right. And the only reason they're in for this residential use is because they already have the site approval that's out there existing. And then what they're asking to do doesn't require a site review other than the fact that they have a plan that went through site review. So.
So it's a, technically a formality in the sense that they have the right to do it, but because we have a site review, a previous site review, we get to put eyes on it.
Basically, it's a mixed-use site, basically. Yeah, commercial together.
What zone is this in?
Village District. Which is the lower-density zone.
Which, so Village District allows the multi-use, correct?
Yes.
Mix-use, yeah, because you already viewed it as a mixed-use site when you gave them the site review before.
Sorry, I just wanted to get clear. Like I said, it wasn't clear from the application exactly how this fits into our zoning. That's why I was asking.
Well, uh. Did you introduce yourself?
Raymond Estes.
Okay, and your address?
Six forty fifty Franklin Highway.
Thank you. Hello. For the record, Ron Allen is joining the meeting.
And I guess the other question I had is, looking at the plans, you have stairs and an elevator. Where are those going to?
There is no elevator.
It's on the. That's why you, you said you filled in the swimming pool and you're going to build on top of the filled-in swim pool.
It's, uh, it's being built on a slab, single-family, single-story building.
All right. I, I just, we'll point to the plan. There's stairs and it says elevator location.
That must not have been removed from that existing plan. I'm sorry. I apologize.
In your purview?
I'm just saying, you can have an elevator nowhere if you want one.
There is. There is going to be no basement in this. It's going to be on.
It's just looking at the plans and it just wasn't making sense.
I guess our, our guidance is to look at how it affects the business use and the site plan. If it changed anything in that regards, what we previously approved.
What about parking?
They're going to share our parking with the house.
And does that affect the business use parking? Without it in front of me, it's hard to.
Really doesn't apply to this, but I did get something from Chris Berry stating the septic system was large enough. And then we also, they actually got me an engineer's report showing that the majority of the foundation around the pool would support the load of the structure. There's a small area that lets you do a little bit of concrete work. Most of it is all sound and it meets the requirements.
And that's code enforcement stuff. It's beyond our scope, right? Back to parking. It doesn't, it's not clear on the plan. How many non-competing parking spaces are there? Do you know what I mean by that? So you can't, you're not blocking anyone in?
Uh, no. The, there's, will be, uh, three parking spots outside of our existing. It will be running along the area, the existing driveway that pulls into the garage of the existing garage house.
The residential parking was in the front of the building by the house and all the parking for the business was on the left side and out back.
Correct.
What the original grid plan was.
They're two separate areas.
And if anyone's seen that space, there is more than enough room to, many. All right. Um, we need to make a, have a motion to accept the application as complete. I'll make the motion to accept the application for an addition for map two-thirty-nine dash one dash TC dash twenty-one amended, amended site review as complete. Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Jeff Brand. Andy M?
Andy M, aye.
Thank you. Buddy Hackett?
Hackett, aye.
Ron Allen?
I will pass. I didn't hear the discussion on this one.
Okay. Andy Knapp?
Knapp, aye.
Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Six in favor, one abstaining.
For the record, we should note that Ron Allen joined the board meeting at seven oh six.
He did that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I didn't do it.
Thank you.
I know, right? Appreciate you covering for me. Um, all right. If the board doesn't have any more questions, we'll open up the public comment. If there's anyone here that has questions or comments, if you could just come up to the camera, state your name and address.
Sure. Dave Garvey, PO Box nine thirty-five Durham. Right now, equity interest in the property next door, representing Mr. Henderson, helped behind it as well. Before you move forward with any kind of approval, I would direct your attention to a number of issues off the site. The site is being basically operated as a junkyard. On the rear side, there are several environmental issues. I have pictures that I passed around to the board. I don't know if you want me to approach or.
Sure. Is a formal complaint lodged?
Not as of this point.
Does a picture of it?
No.
So go through, go through, take them all together. Take a look in order to take you up the entrance right of way goes to our property out and back. So I have an additional set of pictures as well, which I will also provide to the board. These pictures are of the back point of the lot. And these pictures also show encroachments onto a butter sites with the, some of the junk that's out there. They also show very serious wetlands fill that has taken place from his property onto and pictures will show that in addition to that fill. There'll be quite a bit of junk on top of it, all kinds of wood debris and all kinds of other debris. Uh, there's a couple of fuel tanks out there. Uh, there's a number of other just stuff laying around. Um, and the, I think the board would probably want to do a site walk to take a look at the environmental damage prior to granting any kind of application approval.
Do you, do you know if this has all occurred in the last year or these conditions existed before these folks got the property?
I do not know. This is, this appears to be just material that has been piled up over the last year or two. I don't know how long they've owned the property. And it's been more than a year. Anyway, there is some encroachment onto our property with the fill and tons of stuff that have been piled on top of it as well. So. And again, like I say, the board might want to just take a walk out there, have a site walk, see what it is.
Are those pictures the same as the ones you?
Is there a way I could see these pictures as well? Um, I try to hold them up to the camera for you.
Want me to do that for this computer?
Um.
Might show. This is. See that?
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
So this is the entrance as just as you're coming in to the far east of their property. This is the entrance.
Tree. I don't, they're so pixelated from what I'm seeing. I don't know if you guys see them any better, Steve. That one you can.
That one you can. So this is the fuel tank, tires laying around all over the place, et cetera. This is the fuel tanks. Um, all kinds of trailers, other equipment that's abandoned, some that's being potentially used. This one, old tub. And trailers. Again, a close-up of the fuel tanks. And this is actually showing, if you look through the trees, you can see where the concrete structure is approaching on the lot next door.
Excellent. Mr. Garvey, please. The one that you say is encroaching on the lot?
Yep. So you can see the flags go down. This is, and the stone wall. This is on the other side of the stone wall.
So you're saying this is your property on this side?
This, this, it's all on this side of the stone wall. It's his, it's his property.
Right.
With my right-of-way going over it. And then this is the stone wall. On this side is the credit union property. He's done the tank over encroaching on their property.
And that's a tank.
There's a, both a fuel tank and a concrete system. It's also pushed a substantial amount of debris into septic system onto the credit union lot as well.
Is this wetlands or is it standing water?
That's wetlands.
See, when they put in a septic system?
Yeah, there were, they came before us. There was. That was Scott Berry because we just thought the parking lot.
So each one gets a little closer so that you can see what it is.
Hauled off in dumpsters. Everything that I cut down, the trees and everything and to put the parking lot in, it's all hauled off in dumpsters. I have all the receipts from when they came out of there, was existing when we purchased the property.
Are you saying that this stuff is not existing on the lot currently?
What's, I haven't seen any of that stuff.
It shows a concrete tank.
Have construction equipment, absolutely. I run a construction company. And there is a tank out there. I thought it was in the easement area. The easement.
So everything that's on the property now, was any of it there when you purchased the property?
Mr. Garvey, are you all set? Your comment?
For now.
Thank you.
Are you going in front of that?
We're going to, yeah, get the microphone. Sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Physical chairs.
Raymond Estes again.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right. Can we show him the photographs so that he can comment on whether?
I see the second set of pictures. I haven't.
Those come this way, Ron, and I'll give them these ones to look at.
On the first set of pictures, the only stuff that I think would meet the definition of a junkyard by the regulations of the ties.
My question, John, is that because there's a site review for another business to run a construction business out of there as well is not in compliance with the site review?
He hasn't got site review to run a contractor's business out of there.
Right, you got to run a salon. So it wouldn't be consistent with running a salon, would it, to be running a contracting business out of there as well?
Right. The equipment being in there, you, you can, by our regulations, we have a contractor's storage yard and it talks about heavy equipment. So if you have more, you're allowed one piece of heavy equipment. When the second heavy comes in, it's considered a contractor's storage yard by how our definition works. Because everybody, there's many people around here that have a utility tractor or an small excavator and stuff like that. So our regulations allow that one piece. When you hit the second piece, you not have a contractor.
Even if you didn't, let's go more, operating a construction company out of this site, that wasn't part of the initial site review.
I guess if you want to take it to that route, does every guy with a pickup truck and a hammer have to come into site?
No, I'm saying.
Depends on the nature of the business.
If it's a home occupation and you come in or it's a business, if the Irving starts, you know, selling, you know, starts another business in the parking lot, they didn't come in for that business. There's reason to, that that site plan was for one bit, particular business. I, I'm asking the question. I'm not accusing or deciding one way or another. I'm asking that because there's a business run there.
He did not come in and get approval to have a contractor's business there.
Right. So I guess I would ask the question, I can appreciate the concern over the materials, but is that relevant to this application? Because that's a secondary item that is, would be addressed as a raised by filing a formal complaint with John Hawkins. It's not relevant to a building permit, permit to put an addition on.
Well, that might be, but now that we've identified there's a second business at a location for which we only approved one business, certainly raises questions as you know, what's going on on the site. That is.
And I'm not saying it's a second business. I mean, as many people.
I don't actually operate the business out of there. That is where I store.
You live there.
I live there and that's where I store my equipment. And, and I do have another site that I store other equipment at, that this equipment can be moved there if that is an issue. So I can move all my equipment. It's just convenient for me to have it there so that I can go from there to particular job sites.
Or you could modify this application to request to have that equipment.
Absolutely.
There as part of this application.
And I, and I'm.
What's considered.
Based on the site size, it's acceptable as far as I know.
It would meet the town's regulations, but before I would tell you that straight up, I would like to have this continued so I could review our regulations to make sure that I'm not missing something that I would find by going through the regulations step by step like I do every other application.
But you're saying that before, the, the rules for a contractor's storage yard is one piece of.
He's got more than one in the picture. So he's technically in violation of a contractor's storage yard at this point by the pictures.
If there was a complaint made.
Well, technically, he's in violation. I haven't received the complaint, but the pictures does show that he's in violation of that.
So if somebody brings pictures to the board, it shows something that's non-conforming with the regulations and the zoning ordinance, we're just going to say, oh, oh, no.
Yes.
Recommending is you continue this meeting and have him amend his application to keep his construction equipment there. And then that would be in.
We can just move it to another site.
I'm saying, Jeff.
He uses it, so.
We're not, we're not an enforcement body or a legislative body. So we're not in the enforcement business. So if, if there's a complaint to be made, then it should be made in the appropriate channels, not here to us. And we can weigh that information, of course, but, um.
Well.
And we can promptly move that equipment.
Condition precedent upon the, upon the application as well.
Uh, Andy, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I just had a question about the, the tank storage. What's in the tanks or what was in the tanks? Especially when they're in, in wet, they're in a wetland, maybe conservation would like to know.
Um, that was, uh, that was an old fuel tank that, uh, and that's what the concrete system is for. That tank sits inside there. Um, I've never used it.
It's empty.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, was it, A, was it emptied and B, was it clean property, especially where it's in a wetland? And again, conservation would probably be interested since that tank was or is in a wetland property area.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was never, I've never used it. It was given to me as a unit and it was completely empty when I received it. So I've never, I've never used it. Um, and it's going to get moved to a different site.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, if you were, if you intended to use it, then potentially conservation would, would stay, would say.
I don't, I don't think conservation is a, I don't think conservation is a, a thing that, that comes into play.
No enforcement.
Right. They're just, uh, you know.
They're an advisory board.
I mean, not code enforcement, but.
Yeah. And I understand that aspect of it, but when you have an application in, not only do they have to meet the requirements, but we also, as a board, have to have faith that, that if we approve this application, things are going to operate in a manner consistent with rules and requirements. And so if there's an invitation that things are being done not in accordance with rules and requirements, then that calls in, you know, we have to ask the questions and examine that before we just go ahead and say, well, that's, that's, I'm not going to look over there. We have to understand whether if we make this approval, they're going to follow the rules.
Because of the statement made, I think we could add as a condition of approval that all the. Because of the statement made, I think could add as a condition of approval that all the contracting equipment will be removed from the site and give them a timeline to do so. And I think then that would be appropriate and it brings everything back into compliance.
Which was what I alluded to before.
Yeah, the tank out back, yeah.
Yeah, you just, it's.
That's all part of the construction equipment.
The secondary containment, if you pull out.
Tires were there when we got there, they just have to go to the dump. They just have to.
They were on the property.
Uh, what's, what's your interpretation of the fill into?
Whatever was there is, is, was existing. There was a bunch of brush that somebody had dragged over there. I don't, I didn't do it, I put all mine in a dumpster and had the dumpsters hauled off.
So you have put no material into the wetland area?
There is a pine tree that was falling down in our front yard.
Still on my front.
But it's on our property, yeah.
Correct.
We just haven't had time to move it yet. We moved it out of the way, but we haven't cut it up and disposed of it.
Brings up another question, is it illegal to put a, can you put brush into?
Yes, you can, because it's very, I'll say, because it's different than if a branch is off.
I don't see any brush.
So, um.
Brush pile was existing when we bought.
And it's, and it's, doesn't appear to be a violation if it's just brush?
So I have another question, because I know there was contention when there was the subdivision of the lot and there was some appeal. Is there still a, a?
There is.
Case going?
It's still pending.
Yes.
Okay, so that answers some of this for me here.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
There is an appeal currently pending.
Yep, so it sound, to be candid, it sounds a little retaliatory. But it's, as the person tied to it, he does have a right to raise it and address the concern.
Thank you. And we will rectify his concerns.
I remember this going back and forth when we sat here the last.
As well. Are there other public comments? Mr. Garvey, would you like to add?
Just, just please. Number one, there was an appeal filed by him. The court struck that down and ruled in our favor. They appealed for a rehearing, judge struck that down. So their only avenue of appeal right now is to the Supreme Court. As of this moment, they have not done it. So that's number one. Number two, again, I've asked the board to do a site walk prior to granting any kind of an approval. Reason for doing that is so that you can see with your own eyes what's in the pictures and you can see what has been done. There is definitely fill in the wetlands and there is definitely an encroachment from his property onto ours with that fill. So the, the board's responsibility is to determine, obviously, whether or not this is an appropriate application, whether or not he meets the requirements. And again, like you said, whether or not you know what you approve is gonna be done correctly. Okay, so in my request is very simply, the board just go and take a look so that you know what you're dealing with.
Wait, okay, so a couple of questions for you is, number one, I had asked you the question, was this done? They, they just assumed ownership of the property a year, within the last two years, whether any of this was done. According to their statements is, anything that was put into the wetland area was done prior to them owning the property. Why was it not an issue before they took ownership of the property?
Which may or may not be true. We don't know the answer to that question.
A site walk won't get to that either.
Site walk, well, the site walk will let you see with your own eyes what has happened.
And when you say, and into the area, what type of material are you talking about? Is it brush? Is it gravel?
There are rocks, there are dirt, there's all kinds of other material besides brush. There's junk that they've thrown in there, there's a half of a hall, there's all kinds of stuff in that pile. So again, for, for, from DES's perspective, if he's the property owner, it's his responsibility.
It may be his responsibility to care, but you are, you keep saying, well, they did this and they did that.
I've said, I've said that there is filled there.
Okay.
You did just say that they put it there. That was your words, that they put it there.
And it is recorded.
And, and I don't know as though we need to go into a dialogue about this, as Andy said, we can put those in condition precedents, that it'd be cleaned up. It, this is a by right application to, to add this to their property. It's not something that we're giving any special exception to. So I don't know as though, and site walk or not, we can decide if we choose to do that, but we can simply ask them to have them clean up the material before it's, it's recorded.
Right, I, that is the material on their property. Now, if there has been at some time in the past, material that was put over the line onto an adjacent property, that, that isn't an issue for the board.
I was gonna say, that's not relevant to our board, that's a civil issue.
All we care about is what is being done on the property if there's an ongoing problem. You know, going back to what I said, you know, we have to have some confidence and good faith that you're gonna observe conditions. But technically, when you get over the property line, then it's for the other property owners and to come back.
It's a civil issue.
That's a civil issue to say, hey, this was done. Now, if that was done prior to them assuming ownership of the property, then it gets even stiffer.
And to, to determine, I mean, if it's where the wetlands are, and I mean, it, it's, there's some speculation here that, you know.
Just for clarification, if there is a DES issue, if it's on, not on their property, it's on the other property, the property owner is the one that's responsible for that from DES, no matter who put it there, it's still their property. Now, if the neighbor feels that the next door neighbor put it there, then there's a civil issue for them trespassing on their property with that material. That's a whole different issue, it has nothing to do with this planning board.
Right, right. I think we're all in agreement on that.
And I, I'll be candid, I don't, my take on it is, is I don't see what the value of a site walk adds when we're talking about an addition over an existing pool area, especially when we would write in as a condition precedent that the items you've addressed, sir, would be addressed, on the property would be addressed as a condition precedent.
That's fine, conditions precedent work, but again, at the same time, he, he says that he didn't put any of the brush onto the credit union property either, yet it was not there prior to him putting in the septic system.
But again, sir, that's not an, that would be an issue between the credit union and them if it was there, it's not a planning board issue.
But it's also an indication, again, of what your trust level has to be with your approval, so.
That's what we.
I'll leave it.
Code enforcement.
Thank you.
And if there's a relation complaint, it can be given to me, this, tonight was the first time I seen any of these pictures or heard anything of this.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Yep.
Thank you so much. Any comments, public comments? Steve, I see you flicking, you got a question, comment?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to point out, so, so regional planning tracks leaking underground storage tanks. It is a, a factor of, of environmental contamination that is a, a thing that's tracked on the, on the regional level. So perhaps a condition precedent should encourage them to review what equipment might be defunct and make sure it's, doesn't have gasoline at the very least and preferably also oil in it.
It's not an underground tank, though.
No, and all the equipment's leaving per the conversation.
Yeah, well, I think as conditions precedent, we'll, we'll talk about putting in there removal of oil tanks, properly being installed.
Removal of all construction equipment.
Construction equipment.
Right. At this time, we'll close public comments. All right. Final comments, questions?
I just had a question on the plan set, because this does look like a set of stairs. And since we've already determined it is a one-story.
Yes.
Building.
It will be stored.
On a slab.
But then the attic space?
Okay.
So it's a single-story structure with, uh.
So it's, so it's not just an engineered?
Attic space for storage.
So there will be?
Just be cold storage.
So there will be stairs going up to the attic?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So there is, there are stairs, but no elevator?
Correct.
You know.
Just sit down in front of the.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So just.
Once again, Ray Estes again.
This is me digging into this here. Typically, when I see an attic storage set, it's usually boxed out with a hallway at the bottom and then a door to it. And this, this, do the stairs go up and then the doors at the top of the stairs?
That, that's correct. It will be at the top of the, actually, it can be either or. I, the plans are not complete.
But it's not, the attic's not conditioned space, it's not conditioned space, right?
It's not conditioned space, it's, it's cold storage, period.
Sorry.
There won't be any heat, or there'll be a light switch up.
If the door's at the bottom of the stairs, you gotta have a landing before you get to the door. If it's at the top of the stairs, the door can be read at the top of the trucks. So that determines how much space those stairs actually take up in the structure.
And we'll make sure that it meets cold, obviously.
That's why I was just trying to get some clarity as to where, why there were stairs when we talked about one story.
Hands on, hundred percent complete, to actually what it's gonna be there for.
All right, let's discuss how to write the conditions precedence. That's the direction we're headed.
Actually, I have one quick question, do we need a correct set of plans or is it?
No, the plans, I think, in my opinion, only need to be a rendering, it's, it's code enforcement after that, as long as.
Location and the use is what you're permitting.
Exactly.
Theoretically, I, I didn't even have to submit a set of drawings with this.
When he applies for a building.
Correct.
So. It wouldn't be plan notes.
Do you want to add the one about the contractors' equipment leaving?
Yeah, so what, that's what we're trying to figure out is where to put it. So add the following plan notes, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, you can talk to Carol, but when she did this, it looked like she just kept those lines open because they typically use them.
Right, right, so we just NA those two because we're not gonna revise the plan.
Correct, and then add a number five.
We could add a number five. Pictures are together, just say. I just, the suggestion was brought up about doing a site walk. I, I'm with you, Andy, that I don't feel there's a benefit. I, I mean, the photographs were good, they were informative, we see what the problem is. I don't, I don't feel that I necessarily need to go out there and take a look at it and see what the problem.
Right.
I don't know, the other board members.
John, I don't think that's part of the scope of our body to go and do that. I mean, I think, I think there should be, code enforcement should go out.
Right.
And make sure the conditions.
But we're gonna address it also here in the conditions precedent to clean that up and remove the equipment.
And if, and if, and if in the meantime, a complaint is made, then he'll have to go out and inspect as well.
I think, you know, we've seen something, we should, we should have put something in there where the code enforcement officer goes out and make sure that everything's.
We cannot direct the code enforcement to his job, that's not our job.
The other part of saying, if we tell them has to be cleaned up, then we're assuming that we know what is a problem and what's not a problem.
Right.
Part of our body either.
I would just address it as the condition precedent to clean up and remove.
Right, and to your, to your point, Ron. Prior to a certificate of occupancy, that would be the code enforcement's job. Prior to writing that certificate of occupancy, he's gonna look around and make sure the construction debris has been removed and the tires and trash has been, been cleaned.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Because you have to sign this plan when it's approved, we make a condition up on the stuff being removed, I can go out and inspect, make sure the contractor's stuff is removed before the plan gets signed and then his building permit could be issued after that. I think that would be the proper procedure to make sure that your planning board requirements are all met before the permit gets issued.
I love that idea.
That's fine. What John said.
For me.
Can you give words for that to write?
Because, because you're doing it under conditions precedent?
Yep.
The removal of construction equipment, so that, that would have to be done pre-signing of the plan because that's the section that it's in. So therefore, I would look at that and then you would come, and I would make sure that it's been done before you sign the actual plan. Because when you come in to sign a plan, any of the conditions precedents, we go through and check off to make sure those were addressed.
What, so what plan are we signing with this?
Oh, because he's using his existing plan that was already there.
So there'd be no signing of the plans, but prior to issuance of a building?
You could say that the code enforcement officer verifies that all the construction equipment is removed before a building permit is issued.
Issue of a building.
Right, prior to the issuance of a building permit.
I'll start. So he's using his previous site plan, but does the site plan, it, that shows that there was a pool and there's not gonna be a building there? They don't have to submit a new print?
That's a prerogative of this board, because you could, you could have them redraw on top of that saying that an addition's there as part of it and it might have to have the plan done, but you could say, putting the building on top of that doesn't really change the use, but that's up to this board to decide.
I understand, I, I understand it doesn't change the use, okay? That's a permitted use.
Yeah.
But the question is, we have a plan on file that shows a swimming pool where there's going to be a residence.
So that's the point I was trying to make, the board could accept a mocked up plan saying that it's no longer a pool, it's now an addition. Or you could say, no, we want a complete different plan showing it as an addition. That's the decision at this board, but the majority of this board would have to make that decision on if whether you wanted a new plan or not.
Well, personally, whether we mark up the old one or, or submit a new sheet that shows it, one way or the other, I would think we'd want a, a plan on file that reflects there's a building and not a pool.
The building permit would be in the file.
Okay.
To add to that packet, right?
Or this plan that we have right now could be hand-marked, pool removed, addition. But at this meeting, when we can put the date on it.
Yeah, I'm not looking for anything more elaborate than what's already here.
We'd have to get permission from Chris to do so.
Dave, Dave Vincent.
If we changed the plan and we marked it and had it that way, we'd have to get permission from Dave Vincent because it's actually his plan that he drew. And so.
So do we want to request Dave Vincent does it?
Wow, wow. I guess we would have to have the conversation with Dave to see how he feels about someone marking his plan that's gonna be on a down file.
So the.
Yeah, I don't think.
This is a sheet right here.
Market.
That's already been approved by the planning board. Jamie signed it. So why couldn't they, whoever generated this plan?
Dave Vincent.
Dave Vincent, generate a new sheet showing that this is a structure and not a pool and submit that? Not, nothing else would need to be submitted other than this one sheet.
So Ray could go there and ask Dave Vincent for that plan, he could do that, see about getting that.
I'm sure he has this on the computer.
He, he did a bunch of work for me at the beginning of our project.
Yeah, so he'll just call it up and where.
Him and Chris were together on.
Filled in ground pool, is that what the current plans, I guess it does, that's what's on file, right? Filled in.
Yeah, it's specified that it's filled in already.
All right.
I think there should be two N's, filled in.
So, so basically you want Dave to draw a new plan showing it as an addition and that, and then Jamie would sign that new plan? Is that what this?
I was, I think that's. Wouldn't that be the proper way to do it?
I think it would make it really clean, but it's up to, but it's still you, your board, you guys to decide.
Right, I'm, I'm back to the.
I, I do chuckle, he's gonna go in there, he's basically just gonna in his.
Relabel.
Delete that out, relabel it and congratulations.
And you get to put a couple zeros or three zeros after that one, right?
Yeah.
I agree, so is the rest of the board?
Yeah, and the data.
Amended plan, so that's gonna change.
Sure.
More than that, probably, but.
So. That would also verify that the, the new building isn't gonna exceed.
So if you're gonna get a new plan, I would make the precedent condition that contractor's equipment is removed before the plan is signed. If you're gonna get a new plan and sign it, that way it's all clean, that it was addressed.
All right, but up here under add following plan notes or to revise. I'm thinking. Take one of those two and, and I would say number two, it's a revise.
The following plan.
Revise the sheet one of the plan.
A show addition instead of.
To show addition by swimming pool.
Over swimming pool.
Is that the exact, I mean, we're trying to get exact wording because Bobby has gotta get it.
Love it. You can't get enough.
Okay, so, yeah, you wanna run.
I'll start reading this part and then when we get to the part, stop me and we'll figure the words. Uh, dear applicant, this is the performance of the Barringtons playing board as number seven, twenty twenty-one meeting conditionally approved your application referenced above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to the commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within twelve calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. Add the following plan notes, uh, NA, revise the following plan. Change to show new addition and remove old swimming pool. Acceptable language to all. Uh, number three, any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town prior.
I don't think she would say remove swimming, but it should be the addition of, of, over.
Old swimming. Yeah. Yeah, you're not removing it.
That and he's keeping the foundation of the pool for the building.
Right. I was, I was referring to, to the label on the plans. Be clear. That way we're not having to.
Just so for this twenty years from now.
Uh, remove. So what am I, what are we saying? Change to show new addition, remove, uh. You can say remove a label.
But in location of, in location of existing pool.
Of old, remove label of old swimming pool. Uh, any outstanding fees shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper print, print, print plan sets and supporting documents as required in article three with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during review of the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meaning the conditions of approval. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible eleven by seventeen in PDF format with supporting documents for town.
Okay, question about that. It says three complete, uh, paper print plan sets. We actually are only asking for one sheet to be changed. So, so there, so should it be three complete paper print plans rather than sets? Cause we don't wanna have him go back and duplicate the entire rest of this, this set of plans, do we?
I agree with you.
It'd just be that one page, right? Three of that one page.
But it's just that one.
It's just, there's one sheet that's.
Yeah. Right, there's no other pages. Just this one page.
In the original, what, what, in the original application that we approved, were there more than one page in? Yeah, I'm sure there were because there was the new septic system and. Yeah. So just to be. That's what we're saying is we don't want them to give us the whole set.
Yeah, the others, the rest of it is very.
Right, so.
Change three complete paper print plans.
Yes, and get rid of sets.
Thank you. Number five, removal of all construction equipment, material and debris to include tires, tanks prior to the issuance of building permit.
No, we're gonna do it prior to signing of the plan now. We're just gonna.
And, and, right, that's still. So does that trigger your inspection or?
I'll have to do the inspection and I'll, when you come in to sign it, we'll verify that those conditions are met, including that stuff being removed.
We don't even, all we gotta do is say remove these things because if we go back to the previous stage, all the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. So if we just make it a conditions precedent, you don't sign the plans.
Until it's done, correct.
Right, but that's what it would be. But, okay, that's all you gotta say is.
See, before we are talking about not doing a new plan, that's why.
Right, right. So now we've got, yeah, so if we just make that a precedent, it's gotta be done and you don't sign the plan.
So, to, to restate, number five, removal of all existing construction equipment, material and debris to include tires and tanks. I don't even think you need to say that. I would just say all, all, all construction debris, just all debris and, and non-construction equipment.
It can be legally, yeah, including, including but not limited to.
It, right, yeah, cause you don't wanna, you don't wanna pigeonhole yourself in your wording.
Just say included but not limited to.
Right.
Would you wanna say deemed, deemed, deemed relational to a contractor yard or something of that effect? What's the?
If he's, if John's gonna do an inspection, would it be whatever he finds in the inspection?
We know of some things we should call.
It should be defined what I'm looking for.
Right, right, because if a guy has.
You say the, the construction, the construction ton, if you say the construct, the construction equipment and, um, debris on the yacht or something like that, then that makes it pretty.
Tires and, and unused tanks.
I mean, you, if you can't have it in there, that's fine. To me, it doesn't matter.
Construction equipment and.
No, I, I. Usually you try to weave yourself a wide berth so John can use discretion.
Yeah, I do. We just don't want.
So I get out there, I.
Those seventeen tires.
I find something else there other than that, and I say, you gotta take this out too.
Right, right.
No type of deal.
Okay, so removal of all construction equipment, material and debris.
Correct, that sounds good.
Uh, general and subsequent condition, subsequent conditions. The applicant's engineer shall, there wouldn't be one in here, will, uh, strike that. Everybody agrees striking one, number one. Uh, strike school impact fee number two.
Just a question. You're adding a two bedroom.
If he adds, if it's, if it's added as a duplex, there's gonna be an increase on the school impact fee because you're going from a single family to a duplex. It's a small increase. If they do an ADU, there is no impact.
But it's not an ADU.
It's gonna be oversight, so. So at that point.
This is still applicable.
Okay.
Right, so that would still be applicable.
School impact fee will be assessed at the time of the building permits admitted by the building inspector and paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Where, three, where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board so long as it is applied for at least thirty days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being an expenditure of at least twenty-five percent of the infrastructure improvements required on this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains and improvements indicated on site plan, RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. Uh, any comments from the board? Motion is in order.
Someone's going to.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve application two three nine dash one dash two two dash twenty-one amendments are.
I'll second it. Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp, uh, Andy M.
Andy M, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Uh, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Uh, motion granted. Okay, do they leave?
Congratulations.
Oh, I couldn't see him back there.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
You remember that one?
Yeah.
Okay, with the after.
All right, number seven, uh, Robert DeBerto, request by applicant to pro, to propose a subdivision, to subdivide into two lot subdivision with both lots would access. Driveway. Welcome. Good evening.
This is Bob DeBerto.
You could sit down so that the, the camera doesn't shoot you off.
Thank you.
Just re, reintroduce yourself with the key.
My name is.
Please.
Representing myself. Backlot subdivision, it's taking a thirty-two acre parcel, land, slope. Biting it into two parcels, approximately sixteen acres. Shared driveway. Five individuals up there, sixteen acres. These have been test. The driveway has already been installed. The driveway that has been installed at sixteen foot. Four turnouts in it. Um, I bring that to the attention of the board because there was one, uh, piece of, uh, paper issued by the fire department that speaks of a twelve-foot driveway. That's factually incorrect. What I have here is some, a couple of pieces of paper, one from the contractor who installed. Contractor and then also from the, Barry surveyed it, both saying that it's in foot and.
You could submit that to the board. Guys wanna look at it before we make it to going.
Thank you.
What the fire chief actually said is that it averages, uh, twelve feet.
That's correct. It averages sixteen or better.
I'll, I'll read what Chris Barry, uh, said, Steve, cause you can see, it says, uh, Bob, at your request, we evaluated the existing driveway off Sloper Road, which is to be used in the subdivision application on tax map two thirteen lot six and have found that the width ranges. The average width of the driveway is sixteen feet and in many places wider. Um, and, and from Paul Guptill, it's, it's just an invoice basically for, uh, build specs for driveway off Sloper Road. Driveway built a minimum of sixteen feet wide, including four turnouts. Riprap slopes were necessary. Other slopes loomed and seeded, installed twelve inches, six inch minus gravel and compacted. I'll pass it this way first. If he wants to see the. That's better than any of our private roads, Steve. Does it?
Yes, it is.
Does it meet the, does it meet the standards?
The standards by your subdivision regulations, I put on my staff recommendation, it says a driveway has to be a minimum of ten feet and a maximum of eighteen. He's actually pushing really close to the maximum width that's allowed to happen in the driveways.
Pretty soon it's a subdivision.
I'm. I, I put that in there because of the fire chief comment where it basically wants it built to a road. It's if you, as a board, feel that those are things that should be addressed and you need to change the regulation, you have to follow what you have for written regulations in this application.
Well, I think the fire chief is, uh, talking about fire codes when he says twenty-five.
No, the fire code, one in two family dwellings are totally exempt from the fire code. That's already been determined on the stuff to do with our classics and private roads. That's why if you read his memo, this one doesn't say that it's against the fire codes where some of his past memos did.
He, he's stating that he's had experience where they've given way under weight and, uh, they're, they're tough to, to navigate.
Yeah, and if you look at the construction that Paul Guptill said with the six inch minus and, uh, shoulders all built and all that, that gives more, and then with turnouts going down through that, that way exceeds any driveway requirement that we have that you guys would have to apply. Now, if you feel that a twenty-foot road for every driveway needs to be done, then you need to try to change your driveway regulations and hold different discussion that would involve many. Some positive, but some negative impacts too that would come out during your discussion if you decide to change those rules.
It wasn't just the fire chief though. It's also the road agent who had, uh, some significant concerns. Including our sightlines.
Still the driveway, you still, you still only have the rights to enforce the rules of your regulations and your ordinances. You cannot make up an ordinance or regulation outside of what the county has. I know they encourage you to not approve this because they don't like it, but that doesn't change the facts. You still have to apply your ordinances and regulations. If you don't like the ordinance and regulations, you need to change them. You can't just arbitrarily say no. If you deny this, you have to give what ordinance or regulation they did not comply with. And if he complies with all the ordinance and regulations, why are you denying it? The town would end up losing this one in court very badly.
I think it's a twenty feet wide. You're beyond your maximum requirement of a driveway standard. You.
Right, so they would have to get a waiver to put a driveway in that he wants you to put in.
Right.
I mean, Mr. Morrow's saying twenty-two to twenty-four. I mean, he's going quite wide.
Well, he's, and the thing is, if you look at your private road standards, your private road standards are less than that.
Yeah.
So, um, a driveway is still, I, I tried to explain to Mr. Monroe before he wrote this because he had contacted me and he was looking at it as a private road. And I tried to explain to him it's a shared driveway. It's not a road. It's not meant to be a road. Um, this bit about having a fifty-foot right away, there's a fifty-foot neck. If you put a right away down through there, that makes it so either one of those lots in the future could do a subdivision on that fifty-foot thing because they could make it as a road. If you grew twenty-five feet for each one, so you got a total of fifty, they both would have to agree to create a subdivision there in the future, which the right of way would they get? This would actually make it less apt to happen to where you put more people out there that would make it a bad situation by leaving it the way it's applied here.
Mr. DeBerto, did you say there were turnouts on this?
Yes.
Driveway. It, so it looks like, when I'm looking at the plan, it looks like there's one, two, right here, when you kinda hit the first.
Yes, and Ricky Doug crushed it as a subdivision.
They say, I, I know it's full subdivision, it's spaced out, you know, through the distance, sometimes.
I extrude a ways. Uh, seems to be, there's one there. I think, I, maybe. Just the way it's. Because there is one thing with the fire, the fire chief said when we're changing the regulations, he wanted to have one every five hundred feet. And so I'm just looking at this and saying.
That the standard is a turnout, I believe, every five hundred feet, but that's again on a private road, not a, not a driveway.
Driveway.
Right, right.
I know, but I'm saying, I, in conversation with the fire chief, you know, I'm working on changing the subdivision regulations. Then he, he talked to me about if he could get every five hundred feet with his ability to wave it under certain circumstances, because he can run a thousand feet of hoes. That's, he said that's the maximum they can run. So he wanted the five hundred feet turnout to be able to turn his equipment around. If he gets beyond, you know, he's gonna go out beyond five hundred feet, close to a thousand feet. He can't, you know, park the truck in this, in the road and then run on.
Well, a lot of it is getting one truck by another truck is the only reason for the turnout.
Well, the other problem that he said is you've got vehicles parked at the structure to get them backed out and get out of the way of the equipment so he can get up to the structure.
Then there's also a sight distance. They wanna be able to see from one turnout to the next. So sometimes they would have to be closer, sometimes farther apart.
Right.
Right.
So like I said, he, he's, he wanted five hundred, but he could, you know, if somebody had seven hundred and fifty, it's a straight shot and it's eighteen feet wide, then he'd probably say, nah, you don't need a turnout.
We should tell him to do a petition amendment.
Well, this is subdivision.
Subdivision.
Subdivision. This is something you guys can still bring up after that.
Right. I mean, at that point, you're like, I don't know if you see, like, I've seen the repair bills come through for the trucks. Every time we bang something up, we drive by Braille around here.
That may be a different issue.
It is a different issue.
All right, I don't, yeah.
Um, John, does, so does it meet the requirements for backlot subdivision?
There's only one thing that I mentioned that needed to be added, and that was the agreement between the things for the road. If you read the regulation, I actually wrote the regulation in there. It says it's to be on the plan and on the, yeah, so we'll put that in as part of the conditional approval. We'll make sure that's added to the plan before.
The, the permanent road agreement must be, must be executed and shown on the plan and recorded and need the date of each lot. John, the other point is the ownership of the neck is supposed to be owned fifty-fifty. This doesn't seem to do that.
Yeah, there's twenty-five feet width on each one of the slots going down.
Twenty-five feet is fifty-fifty.
They're each getting twenty-five feet. That's a.
Fifty-fifty. It, the regulation says, um, the, if there are two backlots, the ownership of the neck and the front end should be owned equally by both backlots.
So it's, it's owned equally by both. If you go to the zoning, the zoning says that fifty foot's required, i.e. twenty-five. If you go to the zoning, the zoning says that fifty foot's required, i.e. twenty-five each, and that's in zone.
It says, it says fifty percent, i.e. twenty-five. That to me means the requirement to fifty is fifty percent.
But if it's fifty feet, what's fifty percent of fifty feet?
Twenty-five, but in this case, it's more than, it's more than twenty-five feet, it's not shared fifty.
Oh.
How, what's the width on each one?
Well, I can't tell from the drawing, but right here, it's clearly, it looks to me like it's not fifty-fifty right about here.
I see what you're saying.
So because it jogs out?
The line's straight and the road's not, so he keeps the line straight and therefore it's not fifty-fifty when that happens. See, to me it's not.
So you're saying.
My interpretation of that is the roadway going in was supposed to be fifty-fifty, like if it's not a hundred percent dead in the middle of the lot line going between and it wiggles back and forth, that half of the driveway is on one and half is on the other or close to it. It doesn't say there has to be exactly fifty-fifty, I think when you go to.
Says, says shared equally and.
Shared equally or two.
And then the i.e. is, for example.
Right.
If it's fifty feet, but in this case, when it's wider than fifty feet, it should be fifty-fifty.
So that property line should follow the curvature of the.
No, it just should be in the middle of the road, the middle, the middle of the road.
The next.
Should be in the middle of the road.
Fifty feet.
So how, how.
I think what he's talking about is like here.
Yeah, right here.
It jogs out a little bit, so in the proper.
Right here, I think it should.
Here to the end of the. Follow that right there.
Yeah, so at what point stop?
I think, I think you can't have half on each lot, is that?
I mean, I'll be candid, my take on this is to go through and.
Shared fifty.
Change the. Where you're running a straight pin back to create a mild jog here and over is probably a little on the extreme end of nitpicky when we're talking about the fact that we're, they're going to have a shared easement across it anyway. And you, and I would assume that the road was put in this way because that was the, where you see the road jog more onto one side than the other, is because following the contour of the land and the lay of the land, that became the most functional way.
If you're asking me, Andy, would I, a waiver would be something, I would say yes, but do I think it, I think it requires a waiver. Regulations, doesn't follow regulations, so it's a waiver. Needs to be changed.
Okay, so do we want to request a waiver for, or would cite the specific?
Can you give me the zoning number?
It's four point one point three, corinthians. That's, that's in zoning and there's planning, but it can't exempt zoning, but what it actually says, if there are two backlots, the ownership of the neck and the frontage shall be owned equally by both backlots. So when you look at the little deviation here, it gets a little wider here and a little wider over there, but the equal at the end and down, coming down the straight stretch, to me, I mean, we're talking like there's a five-foot difference, square foot difference or something on one side and the other, there's a point to where I have to agree with Andy, I think it meets the intent of what the zoning is, even if it's.
Right. John, I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing, it's a big issue. Says the ownership of the neck has to be fifty-fifty.
Now we got to define the neck.
How, is there a waiver that, is there a waiver's approvable, I think there is, but.
No, you can't waive this, it's zoning. Anybody to ask for relief?
That would be a very.
Where do you view the end of the neck?
Yeah.
Well, where I think it's not fifty-fifty is right here.
Right, right.
So that could be the end of the neck?
Well, the neck ends right there, obviously.
I don't think it's obvious because it gets so wide there, the neck could end back here. You know?
You're saying that you want to define the neck as there?
I'm not defining the neck, I'm saying the neck could end there because, I mean, you could say the neck's out here.
You guys are pushing it.
It's just, yeah.
Where's the camera?
The neck is the.
It's been a whole night.
That's not the neck, that's the frontage. The neck is the part, is this whole part.
Go make sure you're there.
All right.
Those are the rules.
And we can't change zoning.
Okay, so you could go, you could do it, you could do it as a waiver. If you go to your subdivision regulations, eleven point two point four, corinthians, three, fifty percent of the neck shall be part of each backlot, i.e. twenty-five for each backlot. So if it's, you got fifty-one percent on one and forty-nine percent on the other, you guys can grant a waiver saying we got fifty-one percent on one and forty-nine percent on the other, and you could do it as a waiver out of your subdivision regulation. I think it's ridiculous too, but if you feel it has to be done, fine, it's, you know.
Can you give me that one again?
It's eleven point two point four, corinthians, three. It says fifty percent of the neck shall be part of each backlot. If you want to grant a waiver saying one neck is fifty-one percent and one is forty-nine percent, that's your choice.
Let's not mock.
I don't think that's what.
No one's mocking here.
I'm saying that the rules that we're going to have a waiver.
No.
I think the waiver, the waiver, the waiver can be the intent of the regulations being met, but it needs a waiver, it's not meeting the requirement.
So Bob, can we give you a piece of paper if you could ask to have section eleven point two point four, corinthians, three waived to?
Yes.
Bob, do right on.
Eleven, eleven.
Give me, maybe steal a piece of paper.
Yes.
Go toward the back.
He's helpful, I think it's.
Barbara's gonna highlight what the section is that you're asking. And then you can just sign it, she'll fill it out for you.
All right. What's the eight point eight?
Eight point eight was, there's one lot line on the right side of the lot that goes through the wetlands, it's actually described in the narrative on your application, that they didn't want to put the.
Monumentation, okay.
And that's the line that, because of the.
Yes, these are the two letters from Chris Barry and Guptill to go on the file. All right.
Chris Barry and Paul.
Did I say that wrong?
You said two from Chris Barry.
Thank you. Did we accept this application as complete?
You have not yet.
All right, let's, let's cross that bridge. I think we've got all the information now with this waiver request, that we can accept this application as complete.
Make a motion to accept application two thirteen dash six dash GR dash twenty-one, parents two, as complete.
I second.
Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Jeff Brand, Andy M. Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand. James Jensen, aye. Application is accepted as complete. Let's, we ready to move on to waivers? We have two. One for monumentation, subdivision regulation section eight point eight due to the monument being in wetlands. Does anybody have any questions, comments concerned about?
Narrative, you can actually read the narrative, they give a good. It's in the narrative of the application. Barry, he did here, good job explaining that.
Requesting a waiver to subdivision regulation section eight point eight, the section requires boundary monuments to be placed every three hundred feet on new boundary lines. We are requesting that this requirement be waived for the southerly existing boundary line as it traverses through a swamp that is impassable due to open water and beaver pondage. Not waiving this requirement will result in the need to monument through an open water swamp where the monuments would become useless and inaccurate due to the nature of the soil, contraction, expansion of ice that forms each winter.
And then I got the language in there. Thing in part of the staff recommendation.
So a motion to grant a waiver to subdivision regulation section eight point eight.
I'll make that motion.
And the language to include in the waiver, not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would be not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Yes.
Second.
Agreed.
Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Ron Allard. Did I hear that correct?
Yep.
Andy M.
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand. James Jensen, aye. Waiver for section, regulation section eight point eight is granted. The next one is waiver for subdivision regulation eleven point two point four, parents three.
For money, it's right here.
Ownership of the neck.
Fifty percent of the neck shall be part of each backlot. So a waiver from.
A waiver for, a waiver from eleven two, eleven two, parents three, fifty percent of the neck shall be part of each backlot.
What's the number again?
Eleven two four, patch three.
Correct. It's estimated to be fifty-one, forty-nine.
I, I make a motion to waive the requirement of your regulations eleven point two four, parents three, to allow the division of the neck as reflected on the plan submitted with the application dated eleven sixteen twenty-one. As the conditions, specific circumstances relative to the subdivision or conditions of the land in such subdivision indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp, Andy M.
Andy, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye, waiver for eleven two four, parents three, granted. Right, no more questions from the board, I'll open public comment. Does anyone here or out there that would like to speak?
The virtual participants are all board members.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll close public comment.
So looking at the, the letter from the fire chief, just one line from it, it says, this driveway is long and winding and does not always provide adequate sight distance, and the road agent's letter talked about a pretty significant double S curve. I was just trying to look in subdivision and zoning for if there's any sightline requirements within driveways and or turning radii, turn radii, how sharp the curves are. Does that exist anywhere?
No, there isn't. The regulations for the driveway is the section in subdivision that I highlighted, and on the end of that last page, it talks about safety in the driveway, and that safety applies to paving the end of the driveway in sight distance where it connects to the existing class five road.
Maybe that should be changed, but maybe that's how it is.
Yeah, food for thought on some driveway regulations and stuff Jeff, you're working on with the fire chief, Steve, certainly put your input in there. Any other questions, comments? I'll.
Nobody's going to have privacy around housing.
Wow, the thing is, if you end up putting wide roads down through, they're going to be saying, okay, individual driveways, you go away with shared driveways, now you got more, got one lined up right after the other. Actually more dangerous to people driving down the road than having a good driveway. That's my opinion, that, that'd be part of the discussion, the driveway. So on that draft notice of decision that I put together, buddy?
Yep.
You want to add that other waiver about the fifty percent of the neck, eleven point two point four three, that that should show on the plan too, like all the other waivers that normally would show on a plan.
Okay. And any points, stop, if there's something to add, but I'll start reading the draft notice of decision, dear applicant, this is to inform you that the parent company board at its December seventh meeting, conditionally approved the application referenced above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months of the day, the board's approval is to be, will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed upon extension has been granted by the board. Reference eight point two point three, Barrington subdivision regulations. Conditions precedent. Add the owner's signature to the final plan. Add the wetland scientist stamp and signature to the final plan. Add waivers granted for subdivision regulation eight point eight to the final plan. Add waiver granted for subdivision regulation eleven point two point four, parents three, to the final plan. Add permanent road agreement to the final plan and deeds. Number two, proper and complete survey monumentation shall be installed on the properties as a condition to final approval of the application. Granite bounds shall be set at the intersection of existing or proposed lot sidelines with existing proposed streets. Iron pins, pipe or rock are to be placed at all property line corners and angles and all points of curvature and points of tangency. Monuments for the lot being developed shall be placed not more than three hundred feet apart in any straight line. The applicant survey shall certify in writing that the bounds and pins have been installed according to the submitted plan. Reference eight point eight of the town of Barrington subdivision regulations.
Okay, but we waived that.
Just for one.
Yeah, okay.
The one in the swamp. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Final drawings, a five sets of black line plus one set of eleven by seventeen, final approved plans must be on file with the town. Each individual sheet in every set of drawings must be stamped and signed by the land surveyor, engineer, or architect responsible for the plans. If there are significant changes to be made to the plan as specified above, one full-size check print must be sent to the land use office for review prior to producing these final drawings. General and subsequent conditions, in accordance with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, active in substantial development shall mean the expenditure of at least twenty-five percent of the infrastructure cost required for a development, as indicated by a subdivision approved by the planning board, within twenty-four months of said approval, where approved plans have been properly recorded at the registry of deeds. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, water and sewer facilities, or parking lots. Compliance with this definition shall also necessitate that a bond or other security to cover costs of said infrastructure requirements has been posted with the town prior to the beginning of construction, if required as a condition of approval.
The last four or five that they listed is got an asterisk next to them, which means it's listed on all of the approvals. A lot of that doesn't apply to you because there's no. I could see the confusion on your face when he was reading, so I figured I'd explain that to you.
Questions?
The other thing that I did notice because of how it was listed, when there's a shared driveway, that line in between isn't monitored, but that's basically always been done in down through, just thought that, I just want to make sure that you guys all realize that as part of a backlot, typically how it's done, has never been.
You monument though, at the point where the transition changes, I'm assuming, like, it's not in the.
Yeah, so you see, they show that one there, but they're not marking every three hundred feet down through. That driveway thing coming down through in the middle there because you don't want to put pins in the middle of where they're driving.
I don't, I don't think, even though we understood that the waiver was because of the wetland area, we can check the tape, but the wording of the waiver was not that specific, if I recall.
I might, but I just want to make sure you guys understood that that would include that, yeah.
You've already given a waiver to eight point eight. Not putting the pins in the driveway would be consistent with the waiver that we've already granted.
But having that discussion right now on the tape, if something comes up in the future, it's noted. That includes that.
Do we have any assurances on the fire chief's other concern around the driveway meeting specifications to carry the weight of a fire truck?
If need to change the regulations, if you want to change the construction of that driveway.
Steve, one thing you did not see that we had was the construction, the bill, the receipts for the build of the driveway, which specifies the, the base material, which is consistent with what our regulations say.
For roads, red mind driver.
It's actually better than.
So, so actually, he has a receipt that shows that the material that got put into that road base is, it meets our regulations, so therefore should be sufficient to support.
The driveway's better than the Swain Road.
Yeah, the old adage, if you can get your oil truck or your gas truck in, I can get a fire truck in, and this particular application, if you can get a concrete truck down in there that's loaded with concrete when those houses are built and it holds that up, it's got no problem holding your fire truck.
Well, that could be a seasonal, a seasonal detail.
Sure, but is it enforceable?
With six inch, with six inch crushed gravel underneath and the drainage you get out of that, it's not going to be a seasonal issue.
Well, that sounds good, yes.
All right, a motion is in order. Run them all out of me tonight, Jeff. Ron wanted to do one, he said he was late, he was going to do them all.
I'll make the.
Andy already.
I'll make the motion to approve two thirteen dash six dash GR dash twenty-one dash two. And, did I miss something? Parents two, sub and all noted conditions. As, or all conditions as noted. As, or all conditions as noted.
Motion by Andy Knapp, seconded by Ron Allard, Andy M.
Knapp, aye.
Buddy Hackett? Ron Allard?
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Motion carries, congratulations, best of luck to you.
Thank you very much. So the thing under the other business, we had a petition warrant article come through.
Yep.
So because of posting deadlines, it can't be done with your other stuff, so...
Well, let me ask you a question about that. Now, that is by petition.
Correct.
So the board gets to render an opinion as to whether it recommends or not.
Right.
Are we obligated to have a public hearing of that?
Yes you are, because that's how you make your decision, remember, you gotta support it. And the conversation between this board and your vote is part of the public record.
Okay, just asking.
So because of that, and that should be something, you guys hopefully short.
Well, seen as...
Include it as part of your January trust meeting, we'd like to post it as.
Well, seen as the concern for our amendments is that we get the public input, we gotta have sufficient time if we decided to make some changes to hold a second public hearing. In this case, there won't be a second public hearing.
Correct, you can't change anything.
You can't change anything because petition is...
Whether it comes through that, the board supports it, either one or opposes it, 62, it doesn't matter. It's just, you gotta have that in the record as part of the stuff.
Okay.
But the board could make changes to the board-sponsored article.
Right, right. Yes, but I'm saying for the petitioner or, we can't change that.
Actually, it's gonna be a December meeting that you're having, that next week.
Right, next week.
But you, if you make changes next week, then you can continue, any one that you make a change on to that January one.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the petitioner.
Barb looks like she's gonna look on her face.
I do, because you got...
Well, yeah, you get... Sorry, I'm gonna...
Oh, good.
The 8.8 was reflected in the minute, was to do what we talked about, that board didn't vote on it, mapping up on lots. The board vote, which you made the motion, Mr. Chair, was to use the language that was developed at the prior meeting. And so the minutes reflected inaccurately the decision that was made. The posting, the legal posting reflected inaccurately what the board wanted to sponsor. So it'll actually be that that amendment number 10 will be noted with the petitioned article to be discussed on January 4th. It doesn't mean you can't discuss it on next week, but you're gonna have to discuss it on the...
All right, well, wait a minute. I thought we, at the end of that whole discussion, we said, we reversed course and went back to the original, just add on lots. I thought, I, I made the motion that said, just do it as it stated right here.
Correct.
I went back and watched the tape.
Okay, I...
No, I know, it was confusing, and so I, it was actually, I was consulting the Conservation Commission to just politically to make them aware of the petition, or of the...
All right.
And so I went back to make sure I got the language right, and that's where I was like, wait, they talked about on lots for like 45 minutes. But at the end, it was Mr. Hackett, and then Jamie, you made the motion. But anyways, it's a nuanced issue, it's, it's a non-issue because it's going to be on...
So what did...
So you would still discuss it on your December meeting?
All right.
And if you make any changes, then that would be continued to your January meeting, if you made any changes.
And we have, and we haven't, and we still, after the public hearing, we will have to have a vote as to forward it as a warrant article.
Right, that's what you'll do with the meeting.
That's what I want to ask.
We didn't vote on the original language?
We did.
We did, and we approved that, didn't we?
The original language. How it's reflected in the minutes is what we talked about.
We're unimproved, we struck through and...
And what got written and posted is what has to apply now. So you could still change it back to allowing buffers to not exist on all any lots, if you want to, but if you make the change, then you have to hold a second hearing.
So Barb, you're saying that minutes are incorrect then?
Well, that in the posting was incorrect.
According to what you guys, I took it because you guys talked.
And I wanted to bring up one other point. What?
Can we play that tape back?
We...
We get sued by the word, you know, so we gotta talk more.
The vote...
My suggestion is, whatever you guys decide, somebody read every word. Not.
We...
There was a lot of confusion on that meeting.
We, like Jeff just said, we're gonna have a vote whether to continue it forward. We're not having a vote to continue it forward, and that, it got confusing a lot. We're having votes on changes, minor changes.
Right.
And it brings me back to the last meeting where I was outmanned, which, which I didn't appreciate. We had already voted to bring these articles forward, it was just discussion on changes. So really, my two articles on gas stations and service stations, and the other one that got dropped because we were outnumbered, because we had low turnout, really should have, and it's not your fault, you have the right to miss a meeting. But they should have, they should have moved forward.
You can't bring them up now because they're not posted. Now, the one on the 9.5 was posted, so that's posted, so you can discuss that one. If you make any changes, hold a second meeting.
So frustrating myself.
I understand Jamie's point, I think the, the part of the process as I, as I saw it, is that the board, all of the meetings up until the last one, was developing language. And the, the, the last meeting was the formal decision to bring it forward for public hearing. So, I mean, I guess it was built into the process that there would be anticipated changes at that last meeting? Otherwise, you would have just done it at the meeting before.
Right, and, and my understanding was the meeting before, we agreed to bring those, these 11 things forward, and then we were gonna discuss changes going forward and...
So what I have there, Jeff, or what I had Carol do was wrong on that.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, because I picked this up in the office today. And this has the on lots.
Correct.
And that's the part.
But that's...
If you end up changing that in your December hearing, then you would have to continue that one till January. If you, and the ones that you don't make changes, then you wouldn't have to hold a second meeting on.
Right, we can go ahead and have a vote. So what is out for public hearing was the wording prior to, the original wording for the meeting at our discussion, that's scratched, unimproved, it just said, it basically, all lots.
That's the voting board, but that's not legally posted.
Right, so you, but you could change it back.
That's the...
You could change it back to that, but you would have to hold a second hearing if you do.
So now it would be the ordinance show, not prohibited construction within the buffer zone on lots that legally existed on or before March 13th.
Correct, that's what's posted for the hearing.
That's what's posted for the hearing.
And then the petition warrant article is due completely away with the 9.5.1.6.
Well, I, which, which, Steve, I'm gonna, I gotta be honest, I'm a little frustrated, you didn't even bring it up in conversation. That you wanted to do away with the article altogether.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm gonna make that motion, I'll see if we have the votes on that.
No, I, no, I'm saying, we've discussed this, this article three, three different meetings now, and never once did you bring up getting rid of it altogether, you're just kind of aloof and said, it's, it's ambiguous at best, but you never gave a suggestion. I mean, as being a member of the planning board, I would, I would like to think that you would bring forth your ideas so we can have an open discussion instead of, you know, this is...
Sure, sure, actually, actually I just...
Second time for the back door, you know? It's a little surprising.
No, no, no. No, I actually, no, I actually watched the video of October 19th, because it was so confusing. I wanted to, you know, try to understand what everyone was saying about that. And I did say, right around where in the discussion with, with Huckins, what exactly Huckins said, that it should be removed. So I did say that on, on 19th, October 19th.
All right, anything else we have?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, you got it, all right, yeah, because the other hearings are posted, so...
All right.
Motion to adjourn. Actually, before we adjourn, I do have one more little thing. So it's been a while since we've seen Marcia, and I know we have Carol doing some narrow project, and I also know that John Huckins is wearing a lot of hats, which came to mind when I was in the FEMA Zoom meeting with the other day, actually, it was earlier today, it's been a long day. Anyway, I wonder if, I wonder if, if there needs to be more, more staff to cover all the responsibilities that the planning department is trying to address.
Are you willing to take the tax burden on, out on, on your taxes, Steve?
Not me personally entirely, no.
No, I think it's...
I, I, what I feel really is, I've been helping out, and this is anticipated to be a short-term fix. This is not something that's gonna, supposed to be going on for years. But there is a, there is a process that you have to go through to get there.
And it's the select worst decision regardless.
Yeah, and I, and I think you, you have a right to know as a member and be in, in interest in what's going on and how, how it's working out, but there, my understanding, the navigating the field and...
And that's the reason why Carol was brought on, she actually did, via the cases with the staff recommendations in the draft notice of decision. The one that we did that last one because of the fire chief and the road agents conflicting with our regulations, I figured there might be some heat taken for that, so I told her I'd take care of that one, just because Carol's helping out, I don't want to put her in that situation.
That's cool, that's all I wanted to cover on it for the moment, I just wanted to at least bring it up.
Yeah, and if there's anything that comes to your attention that's, that's not being addressed, you know, on, on, and things that Marcia used to spearhead that, that, you know, maybe missed, certainly bring it forward.
What brought it up during the FEMA thing, because it's the floodplain along the Isinglass, was they had recommended that the floodplains get walked every three months to make sure there's no violations in the floodplains. I told Steve that I don't have the time to do that, Marcia didn't have the time to do that, I don't care if you bring on other staff, every three months to walk the whole length of 125, I mean, the Isinglass through the woods, crossing private property and going in through there, I don't think any town person should be doing that.
I think that's a great job for the Conservation Commission.
Well, but they can only have a right to go in the ones they hold easements on, they don't have a right to trespass on private property going up through there.
No, but like hunters, they could ask for permission.
It's a good way to get shot.
Yeah.
Oh, but like a hunter, you ask for permission to hunt on the land and ask...
They could go through the process, but there's a lot of sections on the Isinglass walking up across, that's not easy walking.
Could it be the hunted?
Right. Do you have permission to walk on my land?
No.
It's still illegal.
It's still illegal?
Yes.
Well, I thought if you trespass, you couldn't.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if other towns are doing that. Shooting people? No, having, having staff, you know, walk the floodplain.
That was one of the recommendations that came out of there that they recommended. But they actually said they thought that the way the process was handled in town was handled very well, the whole process we go through. We do have a smar, a very small floodplain area, we're in A-zone, which is like the very minor ones. And the only comment they made, they're gonna send one because I guess even temporary, I mean, shelters under 20 square feet fences and all that stuff that's structured, that's exempt from permits in our regulation. They said should be permitted in the floodplains, and they send in regulations to how that stuff's normally handled. I'm not sure how that would change, because you can actually build a house in the floodplain if you build it to a certain standard. So if, I'm, I'm not sure why permitting it would change anything. So I asked them to send me the information, I'd like to review that and see what that information truly says before we implement any changes, if you know what I'm saying.
Yep.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, two, what's the date?
It's next week.
14?
17?
14.
Is everyone gonna be there?
As far as I know.
You need at least four people.
Yeah, and Steve, I, I know you have concerns, but if we are short, you know, mask and gloves, we can put you over in the corner, you know, if we need four, you gotta do your part.
You're gonna have at least four people.
Yeah. Well, over there by the bubbler, I, no spit, I, I will promise there'll be no spittle set in your direction.
I guess, is everybody here planning on attending? That's, maybe if we can get it, this next week.
Yes, I'll be here. Yeah, I think I'm...
So with that said, Steve, you can stay home where you say.
But if there's an emergency, we may have to call you in. All right, let's have a vote. Motion by Andy, seconded by Ron Allard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, see y'all next week.